Okay, everybody, to our regular scheduled board meetings with the Florida Park District. This is Wednesday, July 16th, 2025.
Uh, this is the public, we do the meeting live on YouTube, the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are to write a note by the beginning of the board of directors are recorded. Request for video recordings made based on the number of reports. A member of the public wishes to make a general comment or comment on certain non-item. Please let me know if you see the cards with the board. If you heard, are available at the table in the back room. At the time, I also have to be right, because we will first check. And we'll hear a little bit more about here later on.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Senator, I have a maybe two four four nine request. This is the portion of the meeting where we will any requests to credibly through the two four four nine. We receive no request under the need of the three possibilities, and we will listen to no action.
So which about taking your own call?
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Here.
And we receive the last confirmation that Vice Chair Ling is absent. Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there is no public comment.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to our consent calendar.
Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have thirteen items for your consideration. And at this time, we've received no speaker cards. And is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you.
Anybody, any board member like to pulling the consent?
Yeah, but I would like to pull C one and two, because I was not at that meeting. And C thirteen.
Two, one, and two, and thirteen. Okay, then can I get a motion on the other existing ones?
I make a motion that we approve consent calendar, C thirteen through C twelve.
Wait, thirteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, C three through C twelve.
A motion by Secretary Mattis.
Second.
I have a second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Ling in his absence.
Great. Now, someone can give me a motion on one, two, and thirteen?
Thirteen to separate, please.
Oh, okay.
Because I have a conflict.
Okay, one and two?
I'll make a, Chair Sloan, I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar items C one and C two.
Motion by Director Yearwood. Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
I'm staying.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Ling in his absence.
Okay. Now, C thirteen?
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Okay, so can I have a motion for C thirteen, I weave, please?
I move that we approve consent calendar item C thirteen.
A motion by Director Yearwood, second by Director Danzel? No?
No, I want to hear why, why we're pulling it.
Because I have a conflict of interest. Because I used to do services in my neighborhood.
Okay.
They were a vendor contractor.
Okay. So then, second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
I'm staying.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Ling in his absence.
Right. That takes us to item D, presentations, we have none. E, we have our committee reports.
Item E one, ad hoc committee for CRPD slash city two by two on June twenty fifth, 2025. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Danzel, would you like to just hit us off here?
Sure, we, we met with the city on June twenty fifth, 2025, they're two electeds. We have four items, I'll go over the first two, I'll leave Chair Sloan the last two. Update on the dog park with, with the White Rock community, just where's that going? How is, how are we doing our side, which we've already approved most things there? It's just getting it done now, waiting on permits, things like that. And then, update on the feasibility study for the Mather Sports Center and the center property. One of those, and you know, that's a continuation of feasibility study. Other than that, you know, for me, there really wasn't much in, in that meeting, other than those. And Chair Sloan's got the last two topics.
Who were the, the elected that were there?
It was Mayor Pupati, and, and it was via Zoom. It was Mayor Pupati and Councilmember Gateway.
Thank you, Brian. We also had a little presentation from the Park District, updating the city on the pedestrian trail extension project at Hagan Community Park. And everything, I mean, the, the district did a great job presenting all these things. They really didn't have much to comment about it. They just were kind of like thankful that they were being caught up with what's going on. Item four on our agenda was the update on the cricket fields, and we told, talking about the Rista del Sol project. And sort of talking about the fence over there at Riverview? Yeah, where they put a fence up and that we keep the, the fence open for the cricket. There's a cricket, cricket club that plays out there. And I had the, the pleasure of going out and photographing some of the kids, because there's a new, there's a new cricket club in town. The Rancher Cordova Athletic Association has started this cricket club, and they had about fourteen, fifteen kids out there. And it was pretty successful, I thought. And I, and then right after they, they did their stuff, an adult league came in there to practice, because they had a big tournament coming up. And I'll tell you, I like baseball, because I have a mitt on my hand. In cricket, they have bare hands. And their balls, the call, they're, they're, they're using hardballs, because they didn't have the regular cricket ball. But the cricket thing is even harder, I think, than, than a regular hardball. And they're catching these hardballs with their bare hands. I, I, I don't know how they do it not break a finger, though. Hats off to the cricket players in the world. It's a tough sport, but interesting. I love to play it, you know, but I have to wear my golf, my baseball glove. With that, also, the, the city gave us a little PowerPoint on, I guess they're, they're going to be upgrading their, their general plan. And they're going to try to get the public to cooperate or get part of the input from the, the public. And so they shared for us their, their plan and how they're going to do that. And that's basically what the two by two was all about. It was us telling us what we're working on, and that's about it. Right?
No, very much.
Not, very few questions. Gateway talked about the soccer club, and Mayor Siri at Pupati was wanting to know about the feasibility studies, how, how that was going. So that was it. That brings us to where? That brings us to our item F, public hearings.
Item F one, adopt resolution twenty five slash twenty six. Sorry? Oh, yes. Dash nine, approving engineers report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy assessment for fiscal year 2025 slash twenty six for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. And CFO Macadell will be presenting this item once the public hearing is been.
Okay, thank you. Then on, on F one, you're going to announce that, that one, that item?
Yes, that, this is the, approving the engineers report.
Okay. Was that what you just did? Okay, so now, and I open it to the public. Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this, or? And we're starting the time at six forty one, this public hearing is open.
And CFO Macadell?
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce, we have Anthony Hernandez with Francisco Associates, our consultant. He drove all the way out here, so I'll let him run the show.
Okay.
Good evening, board members and district staff, so good to see you all. So I just prepared a brief informational presentation on, on the item before you. So the Independence at Mather Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was formed in 2000 pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. The district maintains landscaping and park and recreation improvements in the Independence at Mather subdivision for Veterans Park and Independence Park. So to annually levy, to annually levy assessments on the property tax bills each year, the board needs to adopt three resolutions. The first action occurred on April sixteenth, 2025, when the board preliminary, directed staff to start the process by preparing a preliminary engineers report. The second action occurred on June eighteenth, 2025, when the preliminary engineers report was approved by the board, and a public hearing was set for July sixteenth, 2025. And so tonight's the third action, where the board is being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, and approve the final engineers report, and authorize a levy of assessments for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Each year, the assessments may be increased annually by the greater of the change in the San Francisco Bay Area CPI, which is two point seven six percent, or three percent, so the greater of those two. Therefore, the maximum assessment rates are proposed to be increased by three percent for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. This equates the maximum assessment rate for a single-family home to two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents. And the projected fiscal year twenty five, twenty six revenue is two hundred and seventy two thousand and five hundred dollars. This completes my presentation this evening.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have any public comment about this item, presentation? Seeing none, I'm going to close this hearing at six forty three. And ask my board if we have any board discussion for the speaker.
No, sir.
No, nothing?
Nothing for me.
Okay, then we're going to take a vote.
I move the board of directors adopt resolution twenty five, twenty six dash nine, approving engineers report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for the Independence at Mather Lighting, Landscaping and Lighting Assesment, Assessment District.
Thank you, a motion by Secretary Mattis.
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Ling in his absence.
Great, that brings us to our next one. Clerk to announce, F two?
F two, adopt resolution twenty five slash twenty six dash ten, approving engineers report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty five slash twenty six for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District. And we'll be turning it back over to our presenter here after the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Shelby. We're going to open this public meeting, public hearing at the six forty four PM. And our staff presentation.
Thank you. So the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement Assessment District, which we call PMRID, was formed in 2006 pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. The district provides funding for the ongoing maintenance of landscape, park, and recreation improvements benefiting properties within the district. Tonight is the third step of the annual three-step process to approve the assessments. So on April sixteenth, 2025, the board directed staff to start the process by preparing a preliminary engineers report. On June eighteenth, 2025, the preliminary engineers, engineers report was approved by the board, and a public hearing was set for tonight, July sixteenth, 2025. And that takes us to tonight, where the board is being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, approve the final engineers report, and authorize a levy assessment for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So the maximum assessment rate is subject to an annual adjustment tied to the, the change in the consumer price index using the month of December, with an annual adjustment not to exceed three percent. Any change in the prior year CPI in excess of three percent shall be reserved as the unused CPI and shall be used to increase the maximum authorized assessment rates in, in years in which the CPI is less than three percent. And that's applicable, because this year, the change in CPI from December two thousand twenty three to, to December two thousand twenty four was two point three eight percent. And there was a unused CPI balance of three point three six percent. And so we're proposing to increase the maximum assessment rates by three percent, resulting in a remaining unused CPI balance of two point seven four percent. The maximum assessment rate for a single-family home for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six is proposed to be thirty three dollars. And the projected fiscal year twenty five, twenty six revenue is approximately one million, two hundred and forty eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. And that completes this present, that presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'm going to close this hearing at six forty six PM. And I'm going to ask my board if they have any questions.
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move the board of directors adopt resolution twenty five dash twenty six slash ten, approving the engineers report confirming diagram and assessments and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, District Park, oh, good lord. Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Thank you, Michael. A motion by my, oh, Director Yearwood, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Director Matt, okay, Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Ling in his absence.
Thank you. And that's it, now ready for F three.
F three, public hearing in compliance with Assembly Bill two five six one, Government Code Section three five zero two point three regarding Cordova Recreation and Park District's vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. And HR manager Andrea White will be presenting on this item once the public hearing is open.
Thank you, Shelby. I'm going to open this public hearing at six forty eight PM. And presentation from the staff, Andrea, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sloan and Board of Directors. We're going to load a short PowerPoint to go over this particular item. So what we have here this evening is a discussion about Assembly Bill AB twenty five sixty one regarding vacancies, recruitment, and retention. The purpose of this public hearing is to do an overview of the bill, report on job vacancies, recruit retention, review recruitment and retention efforts, identify potential hiring obstacles and solutions, and provide transparency to the board and the public. So first, I'd like to talk about the overview of what it's required here. So this is effective January first of 2025. It requires that local agencies to conduct at least one public hearing each fiscal year, so you will see this come back year after year, to hold a public hearing prior to the final budget adoption, identify barriers to hiring within the agency, and allow union participation if applicable, which it's not in this case. So our, our presentation is smaller or shorter than a larger agency's with that. So what I'd like to talk about is our full-time job vacancy information, and this is what we're required to report on. Our overall vacancy average is four point four percent. And you see here, January through December of 2024, we did have a few vacancies. And it is our practice, when a vacancy is created, or we happen to have a vacancy, is to fill those vacancies as soon as we quit, as soon as we can. You see, from July to August, there's an increase in full-time staff, and that's from the budget. We budgeted additional staff, and it does take us a little time to recruit those individuals. Our average at four point four percent is actually quite low. Right now, the only data that we could find is through cities. So just for your information, like the city of Rancher Cordova, their average is seven percent. Oh, I'm sorry, there's this eight percent, city of Roseville, seven percent, city of Sacramento, large agency, fourteen percent. And next year, we're hoping to provide additional benchmarking on park districts. So that's where we're at overall for 2024. This is our recruitment process, it's a pretty basic, this is not uncommon with most public agencies. The position becomes vacant, we do a recruitment requisition, we build a job bulletin or update an existing one. We advertise and source candidates, we advertise, advertise widely, much more than we ever have. Review applications, we, HR and the hiring manager hand reads every application. Even though there's some scoring, we, we review and look at every single one. We conduct interviews, for full-time positions, we require a first and a second interview. We do reference checking, that is required before making an offer. And then the contingent offer of employment, and that's contingent on a background check through the Department of Justice that has to clear, and also a drug test and a physical for certain positions. And then we lift the contingencies and establish a start date. So our, our team understands that success of our agency lies at the people who serve our community. So we believe in investing in our recruitment and retention efforts. Although recruitments can take time, we do our best to plan each recruitment to not just be efficient, but also thoughtful, with strong communication and respect for those who apply to work for us. Our agency is in the median of the market for salaries and benefits, and we can often provide a nine, eight, eighty schedule for many of our employees for that work-life balance. And we, that's part of our philosophy, is work-life balance. Of course, we like to offer promotional opportunities, we let our employees know when there's positions available. We meet with employees who apply with us, let them know, you know, give them advice if they've applied and have not been successful. And then, of course, we have our employee recognition programs, and we really strongly value a positive work culture here at the district. Key challenges. So we, of course, have competition with local agency wages that are often higher than ours. There is a market shortage for highly skilled licensed positions. And that, and as you saw in the staff report, the most significant recruitment challenge was for roles that require specific experience or licenses, specifically for park planning and development. This challenge is reflective of the current shortage of experienced planning professionals in the workforce. So we also have challenges of developing succession plans for business continuity and sustainability, which is something that we are working on now. And compared to the private sector, it's a lengthy time to hire, although I think we're a little bit quicker than some other public agencies. So, you know, when, talking about planning, we address this challenge by extending, expanding recruitment efforts, including advertisements across multiple national platforms, tapping into local networks, professional organizations, licensing boards, and adding new classifications to help reorganize the planning workload. So that's an example of what we've tried to do. You know, we review and maintain salary structure to be competitive, and that for our transparency certificate should be updated every five years. And the last time we did that was in twenty one, twenty two. So that's something you can expect to see again here soon. We do continue to provide a competitive benefit package. We showcase our district's culture and mission, including Make This Time Matter and the FISH program. We continue to encourage and support professional development, and continue to support staff in engaging with professional resource groups. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Come on, nobody? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close this public hearing at six fifty five PM. And I'm going to ask my board of directors if they have any comments.
No, sir.
No? Well, thank you for that.
I was, I was going to ask, so like with you, when you have your vacancy averages, you have those for the other years too? And you have your averages too of like how long employees will stay employed with the agency?
Yeah, I mean, there's some, definitely some data, but what's required for this assembly bill is to list what the vacancy averages are for 2024.
No, I get that, I understand, but you have that information, so that way you guys can use that for marketing for those purposes.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I don't think there's a motion, it's just a report, right?
Just a report.
It's important file.
F three?
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay. No motion. I take this to a regular calendar, G one.
Item G one, provide staff with a decision on repair or replacement of the Mather Sports Center based on Arch Nexus's current facility analysis. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the board. Tonight, staff recommends that the board of directors provide staff with a decision on repair or replacement of the Mather Sports Center based on Arch Nexus's current facility analysis by choosing one of the options provided in this report. Just a little bit of a background. So in November, 2024, the Cordova Recreation and Park District commissioned a comprehensive feasibility study to assess the rehabilitation or replacement of the Mather Sports Center. The Mather Sports Center, located within the Mather Sports Complex, is a twenty four thousand, one hundred and eight, thirty eight square foot recreation facility originally built in nineteen sixty four to serve the Mather Air Force Base. It offers basketball, volleyball, racquetball courts, a weight room, a dance studio, restrooms, and locker rooms with showers, which are currently non-operational. The building is in poor condition with critical mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and roofing systems beyond their useful life. The interior layout is outdated for modern, modern programming needs, and administrative staff recently relocated to temporary facilities in the adjacent parking lot. Earlier this year, on April sixteenth, the board approved Arch Nexus to conduct feasibility studies at the Mather Sports Center and the center property. The scope included evaluating rehabilitation feasibility, estimating cost for repairs versus replacement, and demolition cost. So now for the analysis. It's my pleasure to introduce Peter McBride, Principal at Arch Nexus. Peter will be sharing the results of Arch Nexus's facility analysis at the Mather Sports Center. We kindly ask that you hold your questions until the conclusion of the presentation to allow Peter to walk us through the full findings, and then we'll discuss it after, after that. So right now, I will turn it over to Peter, so Peter, the floor is yours.
All right. We just have to switch off. Yeah. Well, thank you, Jill. And good evening, board members and staff. I'm going to try to get this presentation up. All right, well, first, I wanted to introduce myself and say thank you for inviting me to help lead the Pledge of Allegiance. It's been a while since I've done something like that, but that was kind of neat. My name is Peter McBride, and I am an architect and principal with Architectural Nexus. Been principal with Architectural Nexus. Been with that firm for a long time, 14 years plus. You know, not only am I an architect and bring the professional services, but I also am a resident of the Cordova Recreation Park District and use these facilities often and love it. So I, I love being here as a, as a member of the public, as a resident, and as a professional, being able to use my services to make my community better. And I'm excited to do that. So thank you for that. With that, I also want to introduce, and this is a slide that's not in your packet, but I, I want to just make it clear that it's not just me, that we've got a, a team of, of experienced professionals behind the analysis that you'll see today. Ballard King and Associates has partnered with us in doing some of the market and operational analysis. Capital Engineering, our mechanical plumbing engineer, Engineering Enterprise, our electrical engineer, KPFF, both structural and civil engineers, and the coming group, cost estimating. And so you'll see a lot of their information and expertise show up in this report. So how I wanted to present this today, I just kind of want to go over, over this with you to kind of explain how this will go. I'll kind of just explain the, the premise. We'll jump right into the numbers to kind of, you can see right away what it is we're, we're dealing with. And then I'll walk you through kind of how we arrived at that and what led to those numbers. And then at the end, and then also kind of a programming analysis, not just the condition, physical condition, but also the, the programming condition and operations. And then we'll get into kind of the pros and cons and cost comparison of the two options. And then lastly, like what we will do with this information. Right. So really, it kind of comes down to two options, we believe, and that's a repair the existing Mather Sports Center, or replace, replace it with a new facility. So what, what does those two mean? Just a quick overview. The repair would be to, to be, to mean repairing and replacing a lot of non-functioning and damaged building systems, finishes, and really to make it a safe, functional, code-compliant facility. That does not include, I want to be clear about this, does not include a new layout or a remodel of the spaces. The, the purpose of this particular analysis was really just to analyze what it would take to get it up to a code-compliant and operating functional building. The replacement option alternatively would be to construct a new facility, brand-new, that is the same size and the same, and similar kind of construction type. That would include modern, efficient building systems and finishes that are new, and it would include all the same services, but probably in a different layout. But we want to be able to compare apples to apples. So this does not include, you know, new expansion based on any programmatic needs. So quickly, the cost to repair is currently estimated to be just under 20 million. The current replacement value is estimated to be roughly just under 40 million. And that, the facility condition index number is kind of the ratio between the two. And it really is a number that's designed to help building management groups kind of understand where the priorities are in large portfolios and helping them know, like, where do we really need to spend our money? The International Building Management Association identifies 30% as kind of that poor-to-critical threshold, where, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot you can do other than you need to make, basically make immediate repairs or changes. And so we're roughly around that 50%, which is well beyond kind of the normal threshold. All right. So let's, let's take a step back, and how did we get there, and how did we arrive? I kind of want to show kind of the process we went through and some of the conditions that we're, we're seeing. We looked at a number of things, including the limited record drawings that were available, the inventory and assessment plan, the reserve report, which were done over 10 years ago, but those were kind of campus or district-wide studies, and little bits and pieces of the Mather Sports Center were included in that. There's also a, an accessibility report done in 2017 that we looked at, and then an HVAC report, that's all the mechanical systems. And then the roof report, which was done by Garland, Roofing Manufacturer, done in 2019. And of course, we referenced the more recent optimized plan. And then we did our own observations, and, and I'll go through a lot of what we saw and the analysis that, both what we learned from those reports and our own observations and the analysis of our engineers as well. All right. Let's talk about the roof. It's, it's well beyond its useful life. I think that's easy to say. There's extensive damage to, there's, there's three roofs, basically different levels. They're all in very poor condition. They're leaking, they're ponding. There's, there's visible signs of water damage on the interior, and thus all the ceilings are damaged as well. Also, just to kind of note that we did not do any kind of destructive observations, meaning like we didn't get behind the walls or behind the ceilings. This was all just observation of what we could see from where we could be. But like the roof, for example, visible signs like this often, often lead to conclusions of, of what that can lead to, such as structural damage and things like that, which we'll want to do some additional investigation to verify. Flooring in, throughout the facility is, is very damaged. The wood floors, while that gym floor looks shiny and new, there's some underlying structural conditions, which is causing a lot of damage, and missing subfloors and things like that. The tiles are missing or mismatched and damaged throughout. The carpets are frayed, damaged, and ripped, and using tape as thresholds. And then one big thing is that they, we're noticing some differential settlement underneath the carpet, which usually indicates even worse things underneath. If the, the concrete's damaged or settling, it could be an indication of water damage or erosion underneath, which is not good. Plumbing. And I'm just kind of hitting some of the high-level things here, and I, you know, the, the report that you have goes into a lot more detail, and so I'm just kind of hitting the big five or six things here. Plumbing is, is non-functional showers, as Jill already mentioned. There's signs of corrosion and sediment throughout. Aged pipes, they have not been replaced based on anything that we could discover for 60 years, and there's many non-accessible fixtures as well, and venting issues as well. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC. There are units on the roof that don't even work. The gym is not really serviced right now with systems. Even the ventilation systems are non-operational, and they're well beyond their service life. There are conditions throughout the building that, that, that make maintenance difficult, and they've had to be creative, which also makes things awkward and, and kind of non-functional based on the existing conditions that they have to deal with.
Is that 4x4s just holding up the corner of that unit?
Yeah, it's, it's hanging on by a couple loose screws. And that's a, an evaporative cooling unit that you're seeing there, which, you know, we, that, there's something else to consider as well, is that, is that a, an appropriate type of system for what's happening in the building? That's a, that'll be a different analysis. But yeah, those, the image on the right is thermostats for different rooms that aren't in the same room.
They're secure.
They're secure. And so.
You can't even get to the push and button, right?
You can't, and they're not, you know, the thermostat's not recognizing the temperature in the room that it's actually servicing. But that's just one, one thing. But I, I hand it to the, the maintenance guys trying to be creative and solving problems that, that are kind of out of their control. Electrical definitely needs to be replaced. It's well beyond its useful life. Light fixtures, even though some of them are newish, are not serviceable. They're already out of date and are no longer maintainable. There's signs of water damage and corrosion posing hazards over electrical areas, and a lot of combination of old and new systems that aren't really meant to work together. And then, of course, hazardous materials. There, there is asbestos in this building throughout. We know for sure that there's around the boiler and the mechanical spaces, and also in the soffit of the exterior. We are fairly certain that it's found throughout, based on the age of the building and typical construction at the time period, that there is insulation that contains asbestos, as well as lead paint throughout, is, is what we suspect. And, and these things are kind of found everywhere. And so we, we've identified all those places, and I think the point of showing this is that it's, it's extensive, and it's throughout. I just showed you a few, a few images, and there's many, and you can find all of that in that current facility analysis. In addition to the condition of the building itself, Ballard King also did a programming analysis and discovered a lot of unmet need based on a lot of research and analysis, working with the staff at CRPD and at Mather Sports Center. Many current programs are at their max, maximum capacity, and there's a lot of programs that aren't being offered just because there's no space to do it in this facility. In addition, Ballard King recommends a full replacement of the facility to really meet those needs. And I want to make it clear that they made this recommendation based purely on operational, programmatic, and functional needs and programs, and not on the condition or any costs. They made that independent of that. Okay. Now I'd like to kind of go into the comparison between repair and replace, and to do that, I just wanted to give a little context here. I think it's important to kind of look at the, the site and where we're, what we're talking about, so that when I mention, you know, we could build it in a different spot, this is kind of what we're talking about. So right there in the middle, we got the existing Mather Sports Center. And then there's a couple other locations that could be opportunities for a new location for the facility, or for parking, because we know parking is an issue. Although, we're not really analyzing parking as part of the cost of this, that'll come later. But just know that these are areas that we're considering for that. All right. So when we talk repair and replace, I want to go into a little bit more detail, those numbers that I mentioned earlier, what that includes. So for the repair option, that would include demolition, replacement of a lot of systems. It includes HVAC, so heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, replacement of the electrical system, the plumbing systems, roofs, interior finishes, and exterior finishes, and windows with similar or new systems. We'll need to do hazardous material abatement, and that's included. There's no insulation throughout, and that includes new insulation on the exterior walls. Accessibility upgrades and repairs to make it code-compliant. It includes some structural upgrades that were identified and that are needed. A new fire alarm system, a new fire sprinkler system, and then, of course, new furniture fixtures and equipment is included in the cost. And again, just to clarify, that this does not include any new remodeling of spaces to meet any programmatic needs. So it'd be just kind of a repair as is. And so that would include keeping racquetball courts, keeping the restrooms. It would include a limited renovation to make sure, like, the restrooms have all the clearances and doors have clearances that are required for accessibility purposes. And that's all included in the cost that you saw, and that you'll see again in just a second. Replacement would, would be a new facility, same size, approximately 24,000 square feet, and a similar construction type of the existing facility, just so we can compare apples to apples. It would include new, modern design strategies, construction materials, all the efficient new building systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, of course. It also includes new fixtures for FF and E, and that was the same price for both, so it's kind of an equalizer. But it would be designed in a way that would be tailored for the services needed, but at the same size and similar services, but rearranged in a more efficient way. And just to be clear, no, neither of these options were including parking, as that would kind of be probably a similar cost for both. And so it doesn't necessarily affect the decision, we don't think at this time, other than we know we need to provide it either way. All right. So just kind of want to go through some pros and cons to help you maybe understand the benefits and, and the not benefits. So with the repair option, some of the, the benefits would be, it would be less expensive. I mean, that's, that's pretty clear. And I say that with a little caveat, probably, because there's, there's unforeseen conditions that you just never know until we start getting into it. There is a little bit of a lower environmental impact, because we're not demoing the entire building, and so there's less landfill potentially. And you do keep that ability to keep that historic nostalgic character that some people might feel important in the community. Some of the deficiencies would be, like I mentioned, unforeseen conditions. That could affect both the cost and the schedule, and you never know what you'll find, as we, we know quite well, working on a lot of those types of projects. It wouldn't be able to remain operational during construction, so you'd be about 18 months plus or minus without an operational facility. And it would definitely limit the design flexibility of the options, to be able to do some of these new, modern, you know, amenities and programs and services and sports that we want to have, and that the, and really that the community needs and wants at this time, in the lifespan of this project. And, and there will be continued maintenance and repairs that you're going to deal with as the building's aged. I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot more ongoing maintenance, and discovering things that, you know, when you put a new system in an old building, sometimes they're just not as compatible as if it's all designed together. All right. So if we look at the replacement option, the cons for that would be it'd be more expensive. And I think that's pretty clear, and no, no surprise there. Again, probably. You, you might lose that bit of nostalgia, but there might be an opportunity to incorporate some of the art and some of the other features in the new facility potentially. And then, of course, demolition waste would be higher and have an impact on landfill. Some of the pros, though, provides obviously a huge amount of design flexibility to meet the needs of, of the community, and it can be tailored specific to what those needs are. For example, the, the running track that was identified in the optimized plan recently was a huge desire in the community, and that would be much easier to do with a, with a new facility. Modern construction technology will lead to more efficient use over time, so your utility bills and things like, and maintenance would be a lot less over the lifespan for the next 20-plus years. And then you have full control over code compliance and healthy materials and structural integrity. All those things are known and identified, and you can calculate them and have full control over them. And then, and one option would be, when you, when I showed you that map, if we're building in a different location, the existing building can remain operational during construction. You wouldn't lose necessarily some of that revenue or those services that can be provided to the community. All right. So back to the numbers, roughly, so all those things that we went over and that are included are reflected here in these numbers. So the costs are just repairs, to bring it up to code and compliance, and to fix all those issues that we saw would be just under 20 million. And that, again, doesn't include parking or any of those other additions. And the current replacement would be roughly 40 million. And you might be, like, you, you probably remember, during the optimized plan, they did study this a little bit, and there's a number of 40, roughly 47 million. I just want to kind of clarify that the difference, why our numbers are different, is that includes a much larger new facility of over 40,000 square feet. So that's an additional 16,000 square feet difference between the two, and that's why you're seeing that number being larger. So my guess is that once we start going through the programming needs, if we decide to do a new facility, that it, it will be more than the 40 million if we want to kind of go larger than what that existing building is now. So I just want to make sure it's clear that we're not saying, you know, it's 39 million, but that, depending on the programmatic needs, it might be more. So it really kind of comes down to this question of, do we repair or replace? And what we will do with this decision next would be to start moving forward on engaging with the community, developing a program, and developing some concept ideas based on this decision. So Jill?
All right. So options, fiscal impact, and results of action. So option one is to repair the existing Mather Sports Center. The fiscal impact, estimated funding of 19,570,673 or more if renovation needs to be addressed, you know, if it needs to address space modifications to meet modern programming needs. Funding amount would Funding amount would require other sources outside of existing tax revenues, either by grants, private-public partnerships, or most likely in the form of a bond measure. The result if option one is chosen, if selected, ArchNexus will proceed with community workshops, stakeholder outreach, and programming for the repair plan. Option two, replace the Mather Sports Center with a new facility. The fiscal impact, estimated funding of 39,331,598 or more depending on final square footage to meet, meet modern programming needs. Funding amount would require other sources outside of existing tax revenues, either by grants, private-public partnerships, or most likely in the form of a bond measure. The result if option two is chosen, if selected, ArchNexus will proceed with community workshops, stakeholder outreach, and programming for the replacement plan. So that concludes my report. Peter and I will remain up at the podium to address any questions the board may have. So I'll turn it back over to you Chair Sloan.
Thank you very much for that report. It was very enlightening. I was keeping my eye on Matt's forehead to see which option caused more precipitation deform.
Is that twitchy?
And, you know, that's the thing that we, we think about is that, you know, those, those price tags are so high. And are we, are we able to do this? I mean, this is something that we feasibly can do. And how long, you say 18 months? I mean, there's a lot more that goes into it. That's just the building process.
Yeah.
Right. So before we even get there, we've got a lot of more work to do to figure out this, if it's going to work. I'm going to let my board members talk first, and we'll start with Brian Danzel, Director Danzel down at the end here.
Being in this community as long as I have, I used this facility when it was, back when it was part of the Mather Air Force Base. I've used it now a few times that the Park District's taken over. I mean, for me, where I live, I get a gym within a mile of my house versus driving four miles to, to Mather. So that's part of the reason I don't go over there. I am probably one of the nostalgic ones here in this community, but at the same time, I know the district can, if we were to go with the replace option, you know, the district will do right by the community and make sure that, that, that is heard and something is done for that. But my, both, both numbers are shocking, but not shocking at the same time. I mean, we built a pool a few years ago and we saw what that, that price tag was. And things go up every, every day now. So I wasn't really shocked. But I do understand as a former electrician, when you break into a wall, especially in a center block building, you don't know whether that went this way and then back over three feet. And so, yeah, that, for me, being the nostalgic one, I'm going to actually go against that this time. And for me, I would have to say we need to replace it.
Director Yearwood, how about you?
Well, thank you Chair Sloan.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you know, considering the Air Force built it, no offense to the Air Force, but, you know, that's probably why you couldn't find any pictures. I just put it up over a weekend. But, so the, the replacement one, we're saying, oh, maybe it's 20 million. But like you said, when you start cutting into those walls, that number's going to start creeping up. And so, yeah, I wonder this, I wonder if it says repair or replace slide, that one that's being shown?
Yeah.
How much does that cost?
Hundred and a half.
It's University of Utah.
More than 40.
Darn. That's disappointing to hear.
Just that one move.
Yeah, I mean, we know how this town is with nostalgia. They love, they don't like their old things to go away. But I mean, the building is really, like the pools, outused, outlived its livelihood and its usefulness. So I think if, like I said, if we decided, if we went with the repair, I think we would end up closer to a replacement number anyways. I am intrigued by, by potentially putting it somewhere else on the property to keep the old facility open. That's not something I had thought about before all of this. So that's, that's an intriguing, you know, how that would all play out. So I agree with Director Danzel that replacement was, in my opinion, is the better option. And that's all I get to say about that for now.
Secretary, Secretary Rehman.
Yeah, because I mean, I have the same, you know, experience there too, as a kid with the base and then open to the public. But there's nothing nostalgia about that building. It's just a straight box. You know, I mean, there's, there's no pillars, there's no special feature, nobody, special architect or anybody designed it. So, but yeah, and going over, so probably with the repair, I mean, as a conservative, say about plus 30%, you know, with.
Yeah. Say your question again.
Oh, you know, just on the actual, just repair costs with what those estimates you gave, it's probably that plus 20%.
Yeah, exactly. We, we built in an escalation number, but not a unforeseen conditions number.
And so then if we did, I did it right here. So on a repair of what we have, it would be about a little over $800 a square foot. And then if we replaced it at the 24,000 square feet, it's about 1,600 per square foot. But then at the 40,000 square foot, it's 1,175 dollars per square foot. So that's a big, big investment, big ask, but I think it's definitely worth it where it's at, especially with what we have there.
I can't believe you don't like boxy buildings with no, with no pleasant looks to them.
You want to catch their eye to bring them.
I know. What's that?
Actually, I walked, I went there today, walked around. And I also, while I was walking around, I was on the phone with Linda Budge, our chair, from the Ranch of Codo City Council. Linda Budge is like, she's a historian in this area. And I was just trying to find some, something in here that, I'm walking around and I'm just seeing like a, it's like a Minecraft game that people played. They just put brick, 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 brick. It's all brick, you know? I mean, sure it's not going to, the wolf's not going to come and blow it over, I know that. But I, I take a picture of the, the entrance and it's, it just, nothing was really kind of cool. It wasn't, you know, reflecting any type of historical feeling to me. But I didn't go there when I was eight years old like Brian Danzel did, right? Or Michael Yearwood, I don't know, and grow up there.
Yeah.
I don't, when you were going there, Brian, but it's not, but I do, the idea that you've mentioned about, you know, with a new slate, we have the opportunity to bring that history there and make it even a better space with the historical photographs or something that we mirror or some type of a space-age architectural kind of image there. I know that also, I also, before I came tonight, I called up our retired general manager Neil Orchard. And, because he was the person who secured that property for, from the, the Air Force Base. And he told me it was the, the most valuable security property east of the Mississippi, or west of the Mississippi. So that was interesting. And, and you know, the, what we've done there is great. And we have this other area that needs to be great too. And so I'm just, I've got a, I've got to say, I mean, I know that, that number's high. And then when I mentioned that number to Neil, I think he fainted. And his son, his son, his son actually picked up the phone and said, hi, this is, I go, oh, what happened to Neil? So he, he just couldn't get over it. But we got it for nothing. All these years, we've been putting that money in the piggy bank, right? You know?
Been going into the building.
But we, and the gym was full. There was two of the, the racquetball rooms that'd be using for two, two people in each room playing volleyball, practicing. Yeah. No, they were just practicing. One didn't even have a net, but they were practicing their spikes and stuff. But I mean, I can see four pickleball courts there instead of the racquetball and racquetball. I can see a lot more that we can do with that space when you get creative. The gym was full. The gym is always, that's probably the biggest pool in that, that whole, that whole complex is the gymnasium. There was, you know, probably 30 or 30 kids out there. They're playing full court. And there are people waiting in the, you know, to play. And it was, it was nice to see that. Although I heard, I mean, I heard about the subfloor not being there. It made me think, well, why didn't they ever do that? Why wasn't it done right? We replaced it with something that was not great to, you know, underneath. So why didn't we fix it? So all I can say is it's a big project. It's probably one of the biggest votes I've ever had to make moving forward on something like, besides a pool. And this is triple that budget, I'm thinking.
But we're not, we're not approving like that. We're approving the option.
Yeah, well, so I'm ready to.
Yeah, we didn't sign off on 40 million yet.
I'll be ready to take.
That clear.
Someone wants to make a motion on this unless there's some comment from the public that wants to talk about it.
Chair Sloan, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, why don't you?
I mean, the Board of Directors authorized general manager to activate option two, replace the Mather Sports Complex or Center, what Center with a new facility, and take the, take the required actions to execute the board's direction.
I have a motion by Director Danzel.
I'll second it.
A second by Secretary Mattis. We'll call vote on option two.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Langen is absent.
Can I give you the first dollar towards this project?
Thank you very much.
Start selling cookies now.
So more to come on community outreach, dates and efforts will be brought to the board at a later date. But we will let the board know when those dates are put out there. So you can attend those as well to hear what the community has to say about kind of amenities that we're looking to propose in a new build. So thank you, Peter.
All right.
But right now with the building, with the condition that it's in, like, what is the timeframe? That building, like, how many more years can we get out of what we got without dumping money into it? I mean.
Well, that's, that's a loaded question because each system is kind of in a different state of disrepair. Right now, there's no fire alarm, right? I think there's, there's work happening on that. We have been patching the roof. We have been doing fixes conservatively, knowing that we absolutely needed to do something with this. And so it is a little bit of holding our breath. But if it ever gets to a state of being unsafe, then we would have to close it down. And so we're trying to keep it alive while we maneuver through this. And so we appreciate the, the vote tonight to move it in a direction that maybe we'll need to have this kind of asset in our district for many more years to come. But the existing building, as you could see tonight, we are really just doing the best we can with reacting to things that they come up on.
Is it breaking, is it breaking even?
What do you mean, is it breaking even?
Well, is the money that we're taking in paying for the repairs?
No, definitely not. No, definitely not.
So eventually that, when we rebuild this beautiful facility next door to it, that will become a parking lot, I guess?
That's an option.
That's our hope, yeah.
The cost of breaking, tearing, oh, we can, we can tear down that wall. So we can have like a big celebration with such much embers?
Yes.
I don't think.
President?
We'll have a smash party.
Chair Sloan, take down that wall.
So just to talk a little bit about the outreach, since General Manager Larkin brought it up. So we do have a couple of different outreach options. ArchNexus will be out at the farmer's market. Did you guys secure a date for that?
The application has been filled, but we have not received confirmation.
So once we have that, we'll make sure that we let the board know. We also are going to have a meeting here on August 12th. And that will give you an invitation. We didn't want to do the invitation until we knew exactly what you decided tonight. So there'll be an invitation where the public will be invited to come to this building and obviously give their, you know, opinion. And that will be for the, both the Mather Sports Center and the Center property. And then what ArchNexus is going to do is they're going to put some boards together for the Mather Sports Center and actually put them in the lobby so that people that are coming into the Mather Sports Center can actually give their feedback as they are using the facility. And then we're also going to do sort of the same display board for the Center property at the Codo Community Pool. We feel like those are the two areas that get the most traffic. And so we're going to try to get opinions that way as well. And then we're going to create flyers. And we're going to put the flyers at the golf course, at the senior center, you know, everywhere we can so that people have the information so that they can give their feedback on the next steps within this process.
How about a pop-up at Rayleigh's?
I don't think pop-up, I think you guys had discussed that, but we didn't feel like there'd be enough traffic for the amount of time that ArchNexus could be there. Yeah. But we'll get the information out and of course, social media as well. Shelby and her incredible team will get all of this information out so the public can go ahead and give us community input.
So a QR code to a survey that people can fill out and we can maybe make that go viral.
Yeah, the whole nine yards. So, yep.
I just wanted to also make a comment on, when we, when we did the major, Mather Sports Center and we said to, we had to make it sustainable, so we have to rent it out to outside agencies to come in, you know, clubs and stuff. That could happen with our gym here too. And I want to make sure that we, because the kids that were there were all local kids playing. And I want to make sure that this is something that, if they're going to be voting on what they want, that they've got, you know, more than enough ability to, to use that, that facility and not have it always rented out to someone else. So that's something that we need to talk about.
Wholeheartedly agree. And that's what's important about the Mather Sports Center is it really is a community center. It's a recreation center that brings in that area and those people who live there. And Nina can tell you, I mean, what you saw today is every single day. And that's what we're here for. We're here to be able to provide that space for people to come in and have an opportunity, you know, to play ball or play volleyball or racquetball, whatever it is. And so we, we don't want that to go away. I totally agree with that. So we'll continue to work on that. But again, the community outreach will be, you know, what other kind of amenities? We know that a track, an indoor walking track, running track is something that, that people are interested. But what else? What else is out there that's, you know, that our community is interested? But the boards at Mather will be really key because those are the people that are using it now. So we really want to hear their opinions.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to add to that too, we had discussions about the potential of it being more than just a sports center, meaning that it's a recreation center. So there may be some other, you know, types of programming that we can put into that building to, you know, get revenue, get classes, whether it be art classes or whatever it is that the community feels they would like for it to be a real center destination. We're not limiting it to a sports center for a sports center. We're going to keep it open and see what the public is most interested in. And then we'll, we'll look to program space accordingly. So we're really opening the door to a broader scope of needs that are out there that we need to get identified. So Peter is on board with that. And so we've been crystal clear on approaching this with eyes wide open, ears wide open, and making sure that we're not just duplicating what we currently have out there. So.
So maybe it wouldn't be the major sports center, it would be the major, major community center.
We could possibly even rename it and it would just be Recreation Center.
Rick Sloan Center.
Now you're pushing it.
No. Are we voting on that? No.
What about a black box theater?
So, but yes, thank you, Peter.
Thank you. I'm excited. Appreciate it.
So my, my son does have Minecraft at home, so I could probably design this thing right and I'll start playing with that. Thank you very much. Interesting report. Okay, where are we? Where are the board members? At item H, board officers, none. Board member reports.
For item H2A, there is no training to report for this month. And item H2B is the community activities report. At this time, we receive no speaker cards. And is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you Chair Sloan.
Okay. Well, with that, let's start off our board member reports with Director Danzel.
I've got a few items on mine. The Park District, City 2way 2, we already went over earlier. June 28th, 2025, the exploration park ribbon cutting. What is, what are we at now?
50.
50? Okay. So, you know, it's, it's great in, in the time that I've been here, we've got quite a few parks and it's great to see that they're still coming. That means the community is still growing because if we're putting parks, new parks in the new areas, it means we're growing. It's great there. Fourth of July parade, always, always a pleasure to wave at, wave at thousands of Ranch Codo residents and watch, you know, staff. and watch, you know, staff get out there and make sure that everybody's got a clappy hand or, you know, candy or whatever, but it's always great to be part of the parade. Then also, this last weekend, I attended Party in the Park at Hagan Park and to see one week after what the park looks like from Fourth of July till Party in the Park. I want to commend the Park Services because they went from a dust bowl to green back in this park in a week. And if you saw it Saturday night after Fourth of July was done, you'd think there's no way that they could ever get green grass back in this park in a year, let alone a week. And they crushed it, so I want to commend them that. And then on.
Was it spray paint?
It was not spray paint.
Just wondering.
And then also, on Sunday, I attended the Cordova's Opera Show, which is always great to be part of that. And for me, Chloe, who runs it right now, she's, I guess, the coordinator of it, her mom lives five doors down from me across the street, and so it's always been something that we've been involved with as long as Chloe, we've watched Chloe grow up, and now she's in charge. It's kind of neat. But I was asked by one of their, by their treasurer to come out and take some extra pictures because he knows he can get Chair Sloan's pictures and his own, but having a third angle sometimes is kind of nice when they're updating some of their stuff. But that is it for me.
Thank you, Director Yearwood. What about you?
Well, thank you, Chair Sloan.
You're welcome.
All right, what did I do? On June twenty eighth, I walked over to the Exploration Park ribbon cutting because it's right around the corner from my house.
Twenty eighth?
Huh?
Was it twenty eighth?
Yeah, that's what I got on here. Was it the June twenty eighth? Whenever it was.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's a very well-used park. I know I drive by it all the time and see folks out there on the roof of the picnic pavilion and their motorbikes and all kinds of bad things. But the park's holding up nice. It is very well, very well utilized. And then the other event, I hung out with Director Danzel at the Fourth of July Parade. That was a wonderful day. The weather was the, probably the coolest it's ever been on a Fourth of July that I can remember in a long time, so. But as he said, it's nice to see all the folks out there and see folks we grew up with, worked with, you name it. And then we even saw Sammy Hagar. Remember, we saw Sammy Hagar? Yeah, we did. Yeah, Sammy Hagar was there. The Red Rocker, yeah. This guy looked dead on him, I'm sorry. But that's it. That's all I got.
Well, that was enough.
Huh?
That was enough.
Why, thank you.
I agree. Senator Mattis?
Not much. I missed the meeting last month, so prior to that, I was at the Rosemont, I'm sorry, the Rose Rock, Rock Rose Park ribbon cutting ceremony. I was late because unlike me, I have to come from Gold River, and I could not believe that, how big this district is and how big Rancho is coming and how it took me a good thirty minutes to get to the park. So I was very blown away by that.
I got there in five.
But it's a nice, you know, a nice little park, and it's good to see that area growing because I moved out of there twenty twenty. And so all of that area, how much of that area has grown just in the last five years, very impressive.
Thank you. I got quite a list here, so I'll try to make it fast. Friday, June twentieth, I went to Rosemont High School, and lo and behold, the pool was open. Do you believe that? And we had pretty nice turnout. It was our first family swim night. It was called Splash and Save. Splash and Save? They did demonstrations on CPR and all sorts of stuff. It was interesting, they had the fire, Metro was out there for a little while. For the first night, the first day of having it, it was a, it was a pretty good turnout. And on Thursday, June twenty sixth, oh, actually, remember, this Friday is the second one now at Rosemont Park, Rosemont Pool. But when it come out, three to seven, check it out. It's music and art. Yeah, that would be something to see. I'd like to see that. And I went to the Business Expo at City Hall, and Park District was out there and our foundation was out there. They had a good turnout. On Saturday, June twenty eighth, I was at this ribbon cutting for the fiftieth park in our district, and it made me very proud that I was able to cut that ribbon. It's, I should have kept a little piece.
Taylor Haven's son has a piece for you.
I'll go on, next time. You talk to him, I'll go in his room. Okay, and, I mean, that, that park is, I mean, you're lucky, Mike, that you get to live that close to that park. It is a beautiful park. I mean, the elements in that park are, it's award-winning, so CARPD, look out, we're going to win an award for that one, I think. The next one is the, on Thursday and Friday, I also attended Hagan Community Park, third and fourth of July, the fortieth annual Rancho Cordova hometown events. And probably the biggest crowd we've had in years, I guess, according to Director Danzel. We've got, the attendance was way up and possibly because of the weather. I mean, it makes a big difference. And a lot of other fireworks shows in the region were canceled because of some issue. So we had more people coming into our district and seeing what a beautiful park we have. And on Saturday, July twelfth, I went to Party in the Park, Hagan, and that was kind, that was fun. And the next day, I went to the Aqua Show, our Cordova Cadets, and I actually got some information from Chloe Smith, the head coach there, and we were able, I was able to get the story in the grapevine, front page below the fold. And the next thing I went to on, oh, on Tuesday, July fifteenth, I attended the Atexal Lincoln Village Community Meeting. And on their, on their agenda was the National Night Out, and they're in the process of talking to the district to try to get, they're trying to get the pool open for their, their community there, and they're going to have, they're going to get a permit for something, some event in the park there, so that'll be on August fifth, I think, is National Night Out. And I think that's all for me. Which brings us to training and the activities report. Item I.
Item I one, dish required monthly progress report for July twenty twenty five, and at this time, we receive no speaker cards. However, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to you, General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Clark Golden, or the Golden One.
All right.
Just a couple of highlights from the past month. I also attended the family swim night at Rosemont High School Pool. It was a pretty good attendance for the first one. We had thirty-seven participants show up at that one. We also have two other family swim nights that we've hosted this past month, one at Lincoln Village Community Pool, and that had an attendance of sixty-nine attendees, and then also a very popular swim night, Mermaids and Pirates at Cordova Community Pool Family Swim Night, and that had two hundred and eight participants, so very popular. We also had some legislative committees this past month. CARPD hosted a legislative committee meeting, and in that, I wrote a support letter for Senate Bill four ninety-nine and submitted that in support of the legislation going forward. Did the Rock Rose ribbon cutting, did the Exploration Park ribbon cutting. Also attended the CSDA's General Manager Summit, and Jill Nuns this year went with me, and she'll talk a little bit about that maybe at her monthly before, maybe not, but it was nice to have Jill join me in that this year, maybe learn a little bit about what it makes, what it takes and what it means to maybe be a general manager. So that was good information for her. Thank you to the staff who put together the float for the Fourth of July Parade. It was a great event this year. And thanks again for the Party in the Park event this past weekend and the Cordova's Aqua Show I attended. Some highlights from budget and finance, we had a great end of the year. Recreation revenue finished the year above target by two percent and golf course ahead by nine percent, which is absolutely outstanding for the year. Also, the Finance Department, Matt Goodell and his team, attended the GFOA Conference in Washington DC, took pictures with Donald Trump, and hung out at the White House. So we're really moving and shaking here. Maybe not so much the White House, but a great event and learning about best practices. And again, congratulations to Matt and his team for the GFOA award that we received and was presented to the board last meeting. The Montalona Community Park has an update. The consultants are refining the concept plans, and will be presenting those plans to the board in August, at the August twentieth meeting. There are three grants that we are pursuing. The Land and Water Conservation Fund has a grant opportunity for three million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars with a fifty percent match, and that is for the Lincoln Village Community Park renovation project that we've been working on for years. Community outreach is happening to make that updated for this grant application, which is due on August fifth. Another Land and Water Conservation Fund grant is available also, and we're going to go after it for the Dave Roberts Community Park renovation project, and that grant is for three million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand with also a fifty percent required match for that. Also, we are, have already applied for the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Grant on March eleventh, and we are still awaiting response from that. It is a state grant that goes through the federal government, so there are some delays at this point, and we will anticipate and report back once we hear back from them as to what the status is of that grant application. Let's see. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill Nuns, our amazing director of Parks and Recreation for the report.
Well, thank you, Patrick. So good evening and hello again. Patrick stole my thunder. I was going to give you an update on the family swim nights, but no longer have to do that since he gave the update, so thank you. We had another great month at the Cordova Golf Course. Revenue was up, and the golf course implemented a new tee sheet system, which is really nice for not only golfers, but also our staff. The addition of Will Robbins Golf to our programming has brought a fresh energy to the course, attracting a growing number of young golfers who now are playing at the course. So good stuff by the Will Robbins addition to our golf course. Several P projects were completed last month in Park Services, including the full reconstruction of the footbridge near picnic site A two at Hagan Community Park, and the removal of the old outdoor changing area at Lincoln Village Community Pool. So that's now gone, and it's giving us more room on the deck for people to be able to sit. So that's exciting, thanks to Park Services. Recreation is having another busy summer, keeping the community active and engaged. Tag went camping at Camp Richardson, and the Hagan Community Barn launched its first ever barn camp. It was very successful. Cupcake was a very happy donkey. More fun activities and programs are planned for the rest of the summer. I can't believe we're already halfway over with summer. It's gone a little too fast. This month also featured a variety of lifeguard and instructor trainings, including an aquatic disability awareness training with a certified recreation therapist. This training will help us better support swimmers with disabilities and enhance our adaptive swim lessons, which began on June twenty-third and will continue throughout the summer. So proud of that staff for getting that training and continue to offer services to everybody that is in our community. Thanks to the help of Shelby Golden in Community Relations, the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Monument Sign received in addition. New lettering was recently installed at the bottom of the sign, proudly identifying the site as Lincoln Village Community Park and Pool. So this is the first time that that park has been labeled and has a monument sign, and so thank you to Shelby for all your work. And now people can drive by and say, oh, that's Neil Orchard Senior Activities and Lincoln Village Community Park and Pool. So if you haven't had a chance to drive by, I feel like we nailed it, and so thank you, Shelby, for your help with that. And then the fall recreation and winter recre, the Fall/Winter Recreation Guide will be available online tomorrow. I think that's like a record for us of getting this out. This is incredible, and residents should be receiving, except for Director Yearwood, who never gets his recreation guide for some reason, their hard copy in the mail in early August. So Shelby and the recreation team, really great job of getting this recreation guide out early, get it into mailboxes, so our residents know exactly what's happening for the months of October, I mean, months of August through probably March. So Shelby also is working with print project managers to make sure that the, the mailings go out, because we know we've had a couple of issues with the United States Post Office. Once they get the guides, for some reason, they're not leaving the facility, and as Director Yearwood knows, it's interesting who's getting them and who's not. And so Shelby's really been working with them to make sure that after the guides are, you know, dropped off at the, at the post office, that they're going back and making sure that that post office is actually then delivering them to the, to the houses. So it's been happening the last couple of years. Hopefully, we've worked that glitch out, but we will know, thanks to Director Yearwood, who unfortunately is one of the houses that typically doesn't get it, so.
Well, I am way out there. He can attest to that. Do we take them up to West SAC? Did they drop them off in West Sacramento to be distributed now?
The Pony Express is taking them out there.
Yeah. They're, they're delivered to the post office.
Yeah, like West SAC, the distributor, the one out there?
No, in Rancho Cordova.
Oh, Rancho Cordova.
Unfortunately, yeah. So we, we are, we are staying positive that they're all going to be delivered on time this year, so.
I got a random question. Michael, do you have a nine five six seven zero?
I'm nine five seven four two.
Oh.
They all, they all bases out of the same post office.
Yeah, it's the same post office.
Maybe that's the glitch.
We already know what the issue is, it's just, we'll get it.
Trying to find stuff for my mother-in-law to do.
We'll get it for sure. Okay. So now the special event invitation page. So Summer Concert Series hosted by the community, Cordova Community Council at the Village Greens starts Friday, August first, and goes every Friday at seven o'clock. And then we do have in addition to the special event invitation page, the Lowry Field dedication will be on August ninth at ten AM at the Alstrom Park Ball Field. There'll be brief speeches and a ribbon cutting with the Lowry family, and a formal invitation will be sent out to you in the upcoming weeks, so look for that. Meet the Machines at Hagan Community Park will be on Saturday, September thirteenth, ten to noon. We've got the Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame introduction ceremony on Saturday, September thirteenth. Then Rosemont Community Celebration, hosted by the Rosemont Community Association, will be at Rosemont Community Park, Saturday, September twentieth, from ten AM to two. And then Barktoberfest at Lincoln Village Community Park and Pool with the new sign, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from eleven AM to two. So if you have a dog, or if you don't, come on out to Barktoberfest. With that, that concludes my report.
The dedication is planned for ten to two.
Ten?
Ten.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Wonderful. What a great report. That takes us to informational items, is that right? J one?
Correct. Item J one is our Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach, and item J two is our CRPD calendar for July and August, and it looks like there's no public comment for those items, so we'll move to closed session.
Oh, at this time, I'm going to.
I'll read the item real quick, and then we'll recess. Item K one, in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, the board will meet in closed session to confer with or receive advice from its legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number two three CB zero zero eight four three five. And it looks like there's no public comment on this item either, so I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Sloan.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm just going to recess now at seven fifty-eight PM to go into closed session. If you guys want to hang out, it's okay. Come out and see.
Yeah, we'd love to have a little bit.
You can hear my report. I'll report out.
Yeah, let's hammer it out.
It's kind of exciting. Oh, is the, are legal counsel up there? Oh, is the, are legal counsel left?